All set, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. Let everyone rise and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. On Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That's general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. That auto was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded, our state of emergency is terminated. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, by action of the legislature, that auto was extended until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is a hybrid meeting. We are here in person and it is on Zoom. I'll take a roll. Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Number three minutes of the open session meeting of September seventh, twenty twenty-two for approval.
I move approval of the minutes of September seventh as presented.
Um, I saw a typo on it, so I had shown that to um, um, Bill Buckley, so he's gonna fix it. It was just a typo. So yes, the minutes can go through. I second the minutes.
Motion made and seconded on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Number four, public comment. Each meeting we allow for public comment in person and or on the Zoom. Is there any public comment? Commissioner Director Cronin.
Um, if you'd like, we could do the presentation of the citation to Mr. Stephen Rose at this time, or you can do it later under my report.
Why don't we do it under your report in case some and we can also deal with it tonight. Number five is appointments. We have none. Number six is old business. I have none. Director Cronin, do you have any?
I do not, sir.
Number seven, Opera warrant for approval. I think we can do that.
Yep. Commissioner Stady.
Hold on a second.
Did you copy?
Yeah. I didn't. Look at that. Some blue papers there. There it is. Right here. Is it on the warrant or is it?
Uh, it's a warrant on it. I can also give it to you if you'd like.
Whatever you wish, yeah.
Should be seventy-five twenty-eight.
I don't have that on the warrant. I have payroll expense debt interest. Don't have it on the warrant.
Yeah, well, we're gonna approve it, so we'll have to add it to the warrant.
Yeah, it's still on here with four things.
We'll deal with the opera one when we get to the other one.
Well, you can make a motion now if you want. There's the amount. We'll talk about the description.
Mr. Chairman, through you, of course, I move that we approve an opera grant to the town of Milton in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and three cents. Uh, this award is in the area of, what are we giving it for?
Public health.
Public health. So for public health, that's the category. It's allowed, and congratulations to Milton.
Given that, let me know what you're describing.
Sure.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the award of seventy-five hundred and forty-eight dollars under the opera grant to the town of Milton.
And three cents.
For use in the public health department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will also be handling it later in the meeting, and we do all the other ones.
Right.
Number eight, personnel matters for consideration. I believe there's two at the school, one at the registry and one in maintenance.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, through you, the admission Norfolk County Agricultural High School, uh, first notice of resignation Leah Button of Lincoln Road Island as a day instructor. The resignation is effective nine sixteen twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Resignation Leah Button from the Aggie school staff. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second and final one from the Aggie school for this week. Uh, I move the notice of appointment for Carlisle Houghtie of Walpole as specialized instructor aide at the rate stated effective nine nineteen twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The appointment of Carlisle Houghtie of Walpole Mass as special education aide. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Registry.
And three deeds, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move the notice of resignation of Richard Sirani of Falmouth Mass as a temporary clerk uh, and for the rate stated effective eight thirty-one twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
And the area of maintenance, Mr. Chairman, I, I move the notice of appointment of Charles Cushing of Pembroke Mass as former electric, electrician, uh, replacing Michael Osman, and for the rate stated effective nine nineteen twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
That concludes our appointment. You're off.
Um, we're waiting. We have a one-thirty appointment with um, our advisory board person. Is it one-thirty or one-fifteen?
Dr. Charles is on the line now.
Okay, we can go to that right away. If you'll notice, uh, on our agenda, number ten is revised second budget adjustment. We are meeting tonight with our advisory board, uh, both with the finance committee and the full board. The meeting is in Quincy this week. And in order to fully uh, put in our budget requests, um, we worked on it for a while, and then we, we are gonna later in the meeting vote on it. Um, we have Elizabeth Childs, who is chair of the advisory board. Advisory Board.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, and we're gonna have some conversations here uh, on the fiscal twenty-three uh, supplemental budget request, which we hope to deal with tonight at our meeting. So, good afternoon, Elizabeth.
Hi, Chairman. How are you?
We're, we're good.
Good.
I'm glad you could give us these few minutes so we can get this discussion out of the way, so it will help us in our deliberation later in the meeting, because um, again, it's our intention to get the supplemental request through tonight, and we want to uh,
Thank you. We appreciate that. We have our, our meeting tonight. We hope we can approve the, we hope we can take up what you approved first.
Okay. I'm gonna call the director.
Would you like, yeah, would you like me to explain or have the director explain?
I was gonna have John give us a quick intro and then we'll go.
Perfect.
Good afternoon, Dr. Childs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, the, um, the executive board of the advisory board met last week to discuss the matter involving the expanded um, um, let's uh, legislation, litigation from the register of deeds that now um, seemingly encompasses the advisory board. Um, the executive board discussed the impact of this um, uh, development, and um, I recommended that if they were inclined to um, first en- uh, enjoin the services of attorney Scott Lopez, um, they would need to take a vote to do so. Um, I believe a vote to that effect was done. Dr. Childs can explain that. Furthermore, there was a request to fund um, the legis- keep calling it legislative, but legal uh, costs associated with this task, uh, estimated to be twenty thousand dollars this afternoon. Dr. Childs is here to make requests of the commissioners um, to fund that twenty thousand within the supplemental that is before you this afternoon. That's what I have.
Thank you. Thanks so much, John. So yes, as the executive committee, we did take a, a vote and to recommend um, uh, that we, well, to, to take up Scott Lopez as our attorney as well in this matter. Um, as you know, we've been a named defendant along with yourselves in this matter. And um, the issue is that the Norfolk County Advisory Board does not have a line item anymore. We used to have a, a staff, I understand, uh, before my time, actually. But we don't have a line item, and so we have no way to um, actually purchase Scott Lopez's services. And it's very important, I think, since we're a separate defendants, that we have clarity about um, uh, funding the services separate from the commissioners. Um, so our request really is, um, and I was assured by uh, uh, Director Cronin and uh, Bill Buckley, and that we can create a line item arrangement so that we have a line item for legal services. And um, we would like to request that the commissioners authorize a twenty thousand dollar supplement to purchase the services of Scott Lopez to defend the Norfolk County Advisory Board in this matter. And um, and we understand that's a conservative, but probably a fair estimate um, as the, as the process is getting started. So um, I'm hoping you'll seriously consider that. We really have no other funding mechanism to defend ourselves.
Okay. Um, commissioners, any discussion based on what Mrs. Childs has told us?
No, just if I could, uh, Mr. Chairman, probably from my experience on the advisory board, uh, you know, through you, my comments, but you are right, Dr. Childs. Years ago, uh, in fact, uh, the advisory board had their own budget. They actually had their own, uh, shall I say, Mr. Cronin, not quite as capable, and but this person here, but they did have a person who took care of their methods and had their own budget. So uh, it's not like a precedent setting. It would just be maybe reinstituting or putting that in for you. It certainly, uh, we're all on this together, so I would support the request.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Mm-hmm. Yeah. I'm sorry we're in this boat together, but we are.
Right.
What it is.
Right.
That's a good way to term it, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
I'm trying to stay out of the boat, but it's impossible.
Nope, we're in it. We're gonna just row.
A motion in order to?
That's my question. Do, is this a second vote?
We, it, uh, through the chair.
Sure.
Um, it's your, um, it's your pleasure, Chair. If you'd like me to go through the remainder of item number ten and discuss the changes to the supplemental budget since we met last week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you can take the vote then, or you can circle back, complete the rest of the agenda, and you can wait for this piece. I can do it either way. There's a.
Well, uh, Dr. Childs, do you intend, do you have to take off or?
Yeah, I don't wanna hold you up.
We don't wanna hold you.
I am, I am so sorry that I have such a tight schedule today. And I have to be off the line at one-thirty, but I can be on for a little bit longer if you'd like, if you wanna go through. And the finance committee will have to take up this medal tonight as well.
How do you do it though? I have some methodology.
That's okay, Commissioner. If you wanna vote on her request, it's part of our proposal.
Right, because anything we do here today is gonna be a reform.
I'm totally for it.
The figure's coming up. Okay. Let's do it. Let's do that portion and then go to us, and then she can go back about her business and.
So I make a, see if this works. And, Mr. Chairman, for the courtesy of Dr. Childs, a busy schedule, and we'll be seeing you this evening anyways. Uh, that we, uh, the Norfolk County Commissioners authorized funds as part of our supplemental uh, budget, uh, to uh, engage the services of Scott Lopez uh, as part of the uh, ongoing litigation involving the registry of deeds.
In the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
And set them out to be twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made and seconded to fund a request from the Norfolk County Advisory Board for additional funds in this, this supplemental budget, which will be acted upon today and tonight, the amount of twenty thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It will be on the agenda in the figure tonight.
Thank you so much, commissioners. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Doctor.
We'll see you later on.
Yeah, see you tonight.
Yep, take care.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Having done that, we might as well stay on numbers, number ten, which is the complete, the complete revision of the second uh, budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty-three. The three options are here. They were explained last week. I'm gonna open it for discussion. Uh, is there anything new in your explanation, Director Cronin?
Uh, a couple of small items. Um, overall, first, um, the S R pack will show the tracking sheet, um, the O P E D contribution of two hundred thousand dollars. Now is the notation next to it. Last week, the commissioners um, voted through expressed consensus to defer the action on that item until later in fiscal twenty-three. So we'll bring that back then to um, park that money within the um, O P E D liability fund. In addition, uh, the other changes were, um, we added in um, a prior year unpaid bills account of fifteen thousand dollars with a couple of bills that are shaking in from FY twenty-one and twenty-two um, that we were not aware of last week, but we are now. Uh, and then furthermore, removed the Rhythm District Court uh, renovation fund at this time. Uh, we just received the quote, and frankly, it needs a little bit more uh, work and thought. So we'll be revisiting that later in the fiscal year, because the work in, in effect will be done in the spring. So we won't lose any time to that. Um, overall, other than that, um, the uh, presentation that I made last week, I believe, is wholly consistent with what you see in front of you. Um, oh, I did add in the engineering department. Um, the engineering department is looking for up charges related to um, expenses on the purchase of a Ford T two fifty, which is now gonna be a Ford uh, twenty twenty-three for T two fifty. The cost of the vehicle due to uh, supply chain issues is an additional twelve thousand dollars, as well as related expenses to fit it out. Um, in addition, the engineering department is looking for two thousand dollars in civil survey law books. So those are ads from last week. So overall, our particular, our, our position is uh, out of the one point two three nine million dollar supplemental budget that we have set aside for fiscal twenty-three, we're proposing to spend seven hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, leaving a balance of four hundred fifty one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Um, there's, as I mentioned, I just wanna put a footnote in there again, very strong likelihood we'll see uh, a minimum of seventy-five thousand, perhaps up to one hundred thousand dollars coming back to the county once we receive our earmark from the state for the Hollis, the Wallaston um, playground and a cost associated with the restroom renovations being charged back to ARPA once the work is done. Okay. So we'll see those credits come back. Right now, they're showing as expenses. So overall, um, Mr. Chairman, um, we do have a proposal um, that currently includes funding the registry of deeds, legal services at sixty thousand dollars, and legislative advocacy services at thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, I just wanna point that out, because I think there was some discussion about that last week, and you bet you wanna revisit those matters.
Well, we have to revisit them. We'll come up with accurate payment for tonight, correct?
Correct.
So it's in addition to the advisory board twenty thousand, we have the issue of lobbyists for thirty-two thousand and fees of sixty.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Let's take the, sure, any questions?
So I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
Yeah.
So it appears that on the latest version of our supplemental budget request, if I'm looking at this right, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna have less now than we had in our last meeting. It looked like, the figure I had was four sixty-five, and now it's down to four fifty-one. As far as the remaining balance.
Correct. We added in a few other items.
Because we added in the twenty thousand for the county advisory board, legal.
Correct.
And the twelve thousand, why, could I ask a question for you?
Fifteen thousand for unpaid bills.
Yeah.
Twelve thousand for the van up charges in the engineering and the law books.
Why isn't the, the van taken out of capital as a capital project, capital funding?
It, it could be. It's all pretty much the same. It's a one-time expense built on surplus.
Okay.
But it could be.
Yeah, it could be done that way.
We've already secured the capital budget for FY twenty-three. This was not in it.
Okay.
Uh, this particular item, I understand, was originally authorized, I think it was in FY twenty-one, might have been twenty-two, but they couldn't get their hands on the van right away because of supply stream issues.
Okay, but actually, the, a little more question, if I could, if I may. We took out the O P E D payment altogether. So really, that's.
No, that's just, no, if you look at the top of this first page, Commissioner.
Yep.
Um, the two hundred thousand is just an expense that will not be charged to O P E D that will sit in surplus.
Okay.
Uh, right above it, there's a projected FY twenty-three supplemental budget. You'll see the total there of one million, two hundred thirty-nine, four twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
That's your total supplemental budget from which these asks are being drawn from. So O P E D, O P E D is not charged against the supplemental budget.
No, so if I'm, if I'm clear, it will be though, which means our remaining balance isn't really real. It might be even less than that.
Um, well, it, it will be charged against our surplus, okay, not our supplemental budget. Our supplemental budget is one point two.
I know where you're going. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Um, again, we just did the advisory board's request. Um, on these two requests from the registry deeds, let's break them. Let's do, let's discuss the uh, outside lobby fee of thirty-two thousand dollars. What is your questions of pleasure, commissioners?
Well, the first question I have, if I may, is, you know, um, was there proper backup in terms of an explanation for those things? I mean, certainly.
You asked for it last week. I don't know, but it's arrived yet.
There's no question that the registry, uh, you know, does a service to our residents, does a good service in terms of taking care information and in terms of recording and things like that. And I know that at times, I know that there are regular things in the paper and the different, um, uh, how would I say it, emails that are put out regarding homestead, you know, protecting your property and foreclosure and, you know, information that does suit the public. That's a necessary thing. So I don't know. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm imagining, and I guess I have to assume that that's something that is done with, in, in terms of the consultant. I would, I would, I would hope, and maybe I'm wrong, but maybe that's something that's part of that.
The lobbyist?
The, uh, yeah, the, uh, when he puts, he puts newspaper articles out.
No.
I'd look prepared by the lobbyist.
No.
The consultant firm?
No.
I said, what's, what is the role of the consultant? That's the question I had with no backup.
He's a lobbyist.
Uh, I can get the contract if you would like, and we can read it, but I reviewed it this morning, and it includes legislative um, advocacy reviewing um, uh, potential bills and matters before the general court that may impact the day the register. If you'd like the full scope, I can grab it right now.
No, that's advice. Okay. So he's, his voice, that person, whoever it is, represents the registry after him.
It does include some op, notably, it did include some operational review of the registry. It basically is a very sweeping scope. Um, but uh, the general focus, I think, is on monitoring legislation and, and matters that affect the registry deeds.
Okay, so now, trying to put aside the lawsuit for a minute, how does this, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking through you. Mm-hmm. How does this figure match up to prior years? Is this something that has been done on a regular basis? Is this something that registrar normally requires or has been used to having? I don't, because historically, you've been here longer than me. Well, what's your sense of that?
I believe it, it. I've been aware of, of the lobbying services at the registry for the last five years that I can speak for.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it is consistent. Um, I, I don't believe these lobbyists have anything to do with.
Thank you.
Any other issues other than those that are at the registry deeds, which is my issue, but we'll get to that in a minute. I, I think it's consistent. I, I mean, I think it was the same amount of money last two years ago as it is now.
I'm not aware of what it was two years ago. The contract was signed um, a, a year ago, um, and it was funded in the first year at approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. This would be the second year of the contract.
Oh, I see. Oh, so it's two-year contract?
I believe it's three, actually. If I correct, I can get you that. One second.
It does say, if I may, to read the letter, Mr. Chairman, we have our own information. It says, this request to transfer does not restore all the funding in this budget group, only that funding needed for year two of Norfolk County Commissioners contract thirty-four dash eight dash twenty-two dash eight hundred with the Carroll Group. So it sounds like it's an ongoing type of uh, relationship that has been established, let's say, in prior years. And it does, it does appear uh, to serve in terms of taking care of consumers, um, albeit sometimes with the, obviously, the, the lobbyists are representing the registry of deeds. I don't wanna get into the merit of that. I'm trying to see what's consistent. Um, so I'd be inclined on this particular sum to move approval of this, because I think it does serve a broader purpose in terms of taking care of consumers, information, and, and what he's saying here, uh, you know, other things that relate to the uh, operation of the registry of deeds. Uh, I, I'll move that.
Just as a footnote, Commissioner, it's a three-year contract that started August first, twenty twenty-one. It would re, it would expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
You're right. So that gives me the historical sense of where we're at. And I, I think that's fair. I'm gonna move it.
I've been known to make motions that, that don't get seconds or whatever, and I always respect my colleagues, but I'm trying to sort out again what I feel might be consistently something here. On this particular item, I think this is something that uh, uh, it, it should be moved forward on in terms of the uh, the group, but I'm gonna try this different amount, but I'd, I'd move approval of that amount.
Do we have a second? I'm gonna, I'm gonna second it for discussion, and in fact, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Because I have a question.
Yeah.
And I'm aware of this lobbying group, and I think that, I'm sure they do a good job. I know they've come while we're heard. Uh, I always wondered why we did not participate in this, we as commissioners, on other issues that may come up or our needs.
Right.
We're participating in the funding of this, yet we don't participate in any, say, of what, what goes into the lobbying effort.
Right.
Um.
Which is strange.
I know sometimes the County Commissioners Association hires lobbyists, but one particular item is a funding item that, since I've been here, has come up every year. Still remains glimbo, so to speak, because it's never been approved. And that's an outside, we're funding that separately. Why couldn't we add this team to our issue? Um, in that they're lobbying uh, for, for, for the registered deeds, uh, why can't they lobby for the commissioners too? That's my I'd be more inclined to support this.
Right.
If I thought we were getting some additional services, even if that other question, even if that other issue is being paid for by the four counties through another lobbyist, there are other things that come up that certainly we should have an interest in. And I, I think I asked this question a couple of years ago, but I can't, I didn't get anywhere with it, and I can't remember why, and I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna finalize it, but since it's before us, um.
It's a, would it have to be talking out loud now? Would we have to revisit the contract, modify the contract? I mean, he is hired, the guy, that group, I'm gonna keep saying he, the group is hired to perform a service for the registry, even though we are the ones authorizing it too ultimately, as you know. Uh, I wonder if we can modify the contract and have it include a scope of service to include both the commissioners.
You would need a new contract.
Need a new contract.
The contract currently, from what Nancy explained to me, is between the register and, um, in this case, the Carroll Group.
All right, I'll ask one more question. Third option, it's a three-year contract. If we fail to support it, what happens?
Um, according to the contract language, um, a multi-year contract shall be canceled by the registry of deeds and the Norfolk County Commissioners after the first fiscal year if funds are not made available in the Norfolk County annual budget for continuance of this contract.
So it's canceled when we didn't put it in the budget? It's already canceled?
You could look at it that way.
It's already canceled.
Through supplemental means, why don't you read this, sir? Supplemental means, one could suggest that the uh, contract could be come, could be back to life, but uh, it was not funded in the annual budget.
To a done.
Okay, bear with me now. So, looking for some common ground here, based on what the chair said. If in fact, this contract, if, if correctly, if I'm reading this correctly, has been canceled because it wasn't put in the budget. If we vote the request right now, we'd be continuing. If we don't, if we don't though, we could perhaps have a new contract, one that takes care of both the registry and us, and do, and do that.
In that case, we have to go out to bid.
Right.
And go through the process and then fund it.
Okay, but that, I think that's what the chair is saying. I think the chair is saying, why not have someone, I'm, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to deny the fact that the registry does need someone. That's been historical, okay, in terms of this particular job, but we should also have someone up here as well. I agree. I agree with you. So maybe what I'll do is withdraw my motion, or just, because we can't, you can't vote this and modify the contract to include the services. You're saying, if, if what you're saying is the contract was canceled because it wasn't in the budget, de facto, there was no contract.
Correct.
Okay, now therefore, um, with this information, I'm gonna politely withdraw my motion and have us perhaps examine together with the registry of something that would serve both our purposes, and have us prepared that way.
Sounds fine by me. Um, one of the things I would just respectfully put to the table is the, um, the optics or legality, and I don't know if those are the right words, of having essentially two elected um, boards or units of government share the same um, vendor uh, for lobbying. Um, I, I don't know if a lobbyist can wear two hats. I guess that's what I'm, and, and I, I yield to you because you, you, you're more of an attorney in that space. I don't know how that works, but.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm particularly thinking of one thing that we might be pursuing, you know, trying to get the uh, the revenue in terms of the deeds.
Right, it's right.
That's, isn't that one right there that we might be at odds in politically?
That's one, and of course, that's been the the elephant in the room, so to speak, but.
Right, but that's a separate one.
It is separate, but what if the school needs something? What if the engineering department has changed, and they need to talk to someone?
Thought about, Joe, the trustee, we're talking about looking at the school and maybe having a program.
That's my.
We have someone up there letting them know. And it's a good point. We don't do that.
I'm, I'm aware of this firm, and I'm aware of the principal, one in particular, they, they're very good.
Yeah.
But we, to that argument, we wouldn't have nine lobbyists or five.
No.
Um, and again, some departments never have an issue. Probably maintenance never has an issue, but I, the, the school certainly does. And, and we do too.
Right.
That's my point.
Right.
But if we're talking. But if we're talking about two issues and, and, and the fact that it wasn't funded in the budget, was it funded in three, three years ago's budget?
I don't know. This contract started August first, two thousand twenty-one, so it was funded for FY twenty-two.
So that contract expired.
When it wasn't funded.
And it was not included for some reason in the budget.
Correct.
So therefore, it has expired.
Correct.
Okay, so if there's no contract, we should hold now and maybe examine some options for us. If we can do it with the registry, fine. If we can't, then maybe we just have two different consultants and go forward on that. But, um, yeah, I, I like the idea of the chair. I think we should have, I think we really should have a voice up there, you know, a small amount. You know, we don't have that many things that are filed, but certainly.
No, I can't think of something else to drop here, but I know there are.
There are things, you know, and just the fact that we filed that bill, and it, it kind of made some progress, but then kind of, you know, found its way into, uh, you know, another committee, it have, having someone up there to track it and, and then be in our voice, I think makes it, makes sense. So.
Nancy just sent me a text that this, this particular vendor's been with the registry since two thousand six.
Oh, okay, wow.
It was history prior to August first, twenty twenty-one.
But that group's been with us for a while.
Twenty.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so we're not gonna, at this time, take any action on the thirty-two thousand for lobbying.
Not at this time. I'd like.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to delay.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta tonight meeting to, and then if, 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 if it's resolved before the next supplemental budget, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to support it.
Can we direct, direct the coroner note to investigate?
Yes.
Uh, you know, a possibility of getting consultants for us, if we have something to add.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm trying to move in a orderly way.
Yep. What about the legal?
Uh, on the sixty thousand dollars request from the register, for further for further money for legal support as outlined in his letter, which is in our packet, I think I see what was floating by me here. But I, I'm. I've read it. Uh, if this is gonna go forward, we need to add this so that we can come up with the final number to direct, to direct the director to have it ready for tonight. I'd like to talk. I'd like to. It's on the table.
Right, all right. I'll go first again, never mind. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, very complicated issue, obviously. Uh.
Certainly.
That we're being asked to approve, it's kind of funny, not, not funny at all, it's actually kind of sad. Uh, but we're looking at trying to prove something that indirectly or directly affects us, you know, um. And, you know, I, we're not supposed to make comments on this, and that is frustrating to me a great deal. We can't speak about it, and it's, again, very frustrating. Again, I'll try to be, let's say, uh, neutral and try to be objective. We have a request. Uh, the number, we didn't really see where it came from. I know as a lawyer, when I get hired by firms and they ask me for, give me a backup on a retainer, I have to tell them how many hours or the expected scope of the work or things of that nature. So, um, I'd be inclined out of, let's say, fairness to approve some amount, but I, I'm, I can't feel comfortable with granting sixty thousand dollars. I don't know what a smaller number would do or not do, but I would actually feel more comfortable with a smaller amount. And then if the process continues, which I would hope it doesn't, but if it does, if there are additional things needed, we have to kind of deal with it that way, trying to be as fair as possible. So I can't make a motion, uh, in good conscience for sixty thousand dollars. Uh, I would make a substitute motion or a substitute number of, let's say, twenty thousand dollars to maybe perhaps, uh, enable this, um, unfortunate event to continue, but, um, those are my thoughts. Mr. Chairman, just my thoughts.
Okay. So you're making a substitute motion to, uh.
Did you make a motion?
I didn't make a motion. I, I didn't make it yet. Okay, I, I, so I would say.
Why don't you make a motion so we can?
You're right, you're right, I was. So I, I'm gonna move that, um, on the request for the legal, uh, that we uh, appropriate twenty thousand dollars since I think we're, we're appropriating that amount for the advisory board. It seems fair. It seems defendable that we give that amount to the registry at this time for his request uh, in the, uh, ongoing litigation.
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes only.
Okay.
Okay, so back on May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. We met with the advisory board at the agricultural high school to discuss, um, the different budgets. We had a whole bunch of different versions of the budget. And there was a lot of discussion about, um, the IT and all that stuff, and, um, there was discussion, I'm gonna go from the minutes of the meeting from that day. And I'm gonna quote on page four of the minutes. Dr. Child stated she does not believe supporting the consolidation budget, that's version five, of the budget is against the registry. She stated, we all represent the county. Dr. Childs asked the register if version five of the budget passed, would he be willing to cooperate with the county and make the transition successful? Register O'Donnell stated he has worked hard, and there are disagreements, and the users have spoken. Chairman, Chairman Riordan stated Register O'Donnell was out of order. He asked if Register O'Donnell will work with the county if version five is passed. Register O'Donnell responded, yes. That version of the budget didn't have any money for litigation. It had seven thousand dollars for litigation when we voted. It didn't have, I think it was seven thousand. It didn't have, uh, sixty thousand dollars for litigation. Even though Register O'Donnell gave his word, the litigation continued. One month later, he find, filed a motion to stay on six seventeen twenty-two. And more recently, he's filed a motion to join the advisory board to the lawsuit. He didn't, he didn't stay true to his word. But more egregious than that, and that's really not even part of this, but more egregious than that, he was there when the budget was voted. He was there. He didn't ask for more money then. He could have asked for more money. He didn't. And to support the mismanagement by the registry in this budget issue is something I will not agree to. I will not agree to this, the register's mismanagement of the situation. Look at this. Seven, seven twenty-two. Seven days after the budget went into effect, he asked for sixty grand. Seven days. That's ridiculous. I'm not gonna support that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll just counter, and I do this with great respect. I, I, I understand totally where Commissioner Collins is coming from. I do. I emphasize with you. Uh, I also know that we have budgets as commissioners that sometimes we, uh, we need to adjust. That's why we're having supplemental appropriations. Uh, I don't understand the reasoning in terms of, I can't get into the mind of what Mr. O'Donnell was thinking and not putting more money in. He probably should have. But again, I'm trying to say, look at it fundamental fairness, so we're not accused of being unfair. We did give some money to the advisory board, uh, maybe a smaller amount would be appropriate at this time. Sixty thousand, I cannot support. I can't support that. Some amount of money, yes, I would hope that this, again, this whole thing is resolved soon, rather than late. I don't want it to continue. But I think at this time, a smaller amount would be something that would just maybe move us forward and get things wrapped up. I think one of those motions was denied too, wasn't it? Yeah, I think. He filed one motion, the judge denied it.
Yeah, the judge denied the motion to stay.
Right.
And they ruled, and they ruled against the register, yes.
Right, he did. That, that was, you know, for us, but, um, yeah, whatever. It, it's a hard issue. It's not an easy issue. I've been, I've gone around on this. It's just, it's a very tough issue. Because you're looking at, uh, approving or not approving funds that, and, yeah, continue a situation which I feel, uh, is, is not necessary. I feel this could have been handled in a much different manner, a much different manner. Uh, uh, I think that we're losing the, the, the art of talking and conversing. And that's something that I would pride myself on as an official in Canton, and I'm taking some pride, I think, as a commissioner. We can't do that here because we've got lawsuits, we've got judges and lawyers, and so we can't even talk and try to work these things out, which is greatly harming all of us. And who's suffering? The taxpayers, you know, there's some money.
The taxpayers are suffering when we're funding this twenty grand.
Which is unfortunate.
And we have to fund the twenty grand for the, uh, for the advisory board to protect them. Yeah, they are suffering because of.
I respect your position. I totally understand that. I do not support the request for sixty. I would support as an alternative compromise, a smaller amount. That is my motion. If it fails, so be it. Uh, I understand that as well. Right? Thank you.
My motion is properly before, and Commissioner Collins seconded it for discussion purposes, but he seconded. Actually, I was looking for a, a, a way to start my comments, and I think I'll steal Elizabeth's quote. That this is a boat we don't ought want to be in. I agree with.
So, all right, we're back on.
Thank you very much. I apologize for those out in Zoom land. We had a glitch, but we're back on the record in our.
You were quoting Dr. Childs, I believe.
Our September fourteenth meeting of the county commissioners. The subject matter is additional appropriation requests from the registered deeds, which is, it has to be voted on today because it's goes before the advisory board tonight. I was making some comments. I'll go back over them. I think I can remember what I said. Basically, I agree with Elizabeth Childs when she said this is a boat we did not choose to be in. We did not originate this action. It upsets me to take this vote. However, I do have faith in the court, and hopefully they'll be able to try, provide a resolution to this matter. I'm gonna support Commissioner Stady's request for twenty thousand dollars. Additionally, because I think we have no, no wiggle, no room here to do anything but, in my mind, act in good faith, and it's the right decision. It does not help us to deny it because we're in court. It's part of an ongoing system. It's part of an ongoing case that many times I, I thought we should do more to defend our case, but legal counsel advises me that's not a good idea, so I didn't. So I would like to support the motion as it's in front of us to fund an additional twenty thousand dollars to the registry for his request. I believe it was termed access to justice. I can't wait for justice.
Me too.
It's not the business we're in, but it, it drives me crazy for one, one entity here to be suing another over an issue that I think is clearly already been defined by our actions in this year's budget and other votes we've taken. So I'm gonna support the money. And I, after we take a vote, we're gonna instruct Director Cronin to prepare the paperwork for the figure that reflects whatever we do here today. Any more discussion on this vote? I'm gonna take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. No.
The motion passed for additional twenty thousand on a two to one vote. Thank you very much. Number, go back to number nine, Commissioner Stady payroll and expense warrants.
Yes, sir.
And then add the opera warrant in there, please, for Milton.
Point of work.
Go ahead.
We have a little bit of work to conclude on the second budget adjustment.
Okay, back to number ten. I'm sorry.
If that's okay.
Yes, sure. I was dying to get rid of it, but come on.
Maybe. So as a result of the motions that were just adopted, I would put forward to the commissioners that the total amount of the FY twenty-three second budget adjustment reveal a motion to support a total of two million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents be approved, inclusive of the presentation supplemental and transfer needs as put forward to the commissioners to stay. And I can provide that to Mr. State, to Commissioner State, if you want to look at my math on the back.
So we're gonna vote a, 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 a.
A number.
A number. That's fine. I'm shooting.
So you just jumped in the twenty. We voted. Took it to thirty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what you're doing.
That adjustment down of seventy, I think.
Got it. Okay. With permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll move then the, the total amount of two million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars, eighty-one cents for our second budget adjustment, fiscal twenty-three.
Incluses of supplement and transfers.
Added as so noted.
Thanks. In addition, I should point out to commissioners that we've gone through all of the appropriation or supplemental items. There were three transfer account needs. One was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred within account number three oh one, five one one oh. This moves the funding that had been under temporary salaries to temporary IT professional services. This will allow us to hire somebody to backfill call Cole Capobianco under a contract. Furthermore, there was a general fund reimbursement of six thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars for the Boston recreational fund is being transferred to their automotive repairs. And I believe that captures all of the other transfers inclusive of what you voted.
Okay.
Okay, motions were made.
For the number two nine, three eight, eight thirty-one. Yeah.
I'll second it for discussion again. Normally, I just agree with it. Normally, I would. But because the budget change reflects something I do not agree with, I'm not gonna second that change to the budget vote because I don't want it to be said that I supported that change at any of the levels that was voted at this, at this board.
Wait, so you're voting against the supplemental?
I'm voting against the supplemental as, as, as you know.
Because of the, okay, you're right.
Because of that, because I don't want, I don't want to go in front of the advisory board tonight.
Okay.
And I don't want anyone to say the three commissioners voted this budget. I don't want my name on that.
You got it.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion? Vote to instruct the county director, Mr. Cronin, to prepare the paperwork for tonight's county advisory board meeting with the supplemental num, adjustment number at two million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety?
Eight hundred thirty-eight.
Oh, I'm off seven dollars. Eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and.
Thirty-one cents.
And thirty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Now opposed. That's also a two to one vote.
Two to one vote.
All right. Is that all we need on the advisory, on the supplementary budget?
It is.
Okay, we're now back to item number nine, payroll and expense warrants.
Excuse me. Procedurally, if you vote against something like this, you don't sign it then, right? It's just, it's your main jury.
Wait, all you need is two anyway. I'm fine with it.
Just letting you know.
Thank you. I might have signed it.
I know. I know. I'm trying to protect you a little bit.
Thank you.
No, that's all. Thank you. As long as you got two. All right.
Thank you.
Opera?
Right, and add opera to the payroll. All the warrants, please.
You got it. All right, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the ball for approval for the warrant list of nine fourteen twenty-two. Number one, twenty-three dash eleven payroll of the county, a hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars, eighteen cents. So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Number two, line item oh nine dash oh two dash twenty-three, expense of the county in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars, forty cents. So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Number three, twenty-three dash two debt and interest, the amount of sixty thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, sixty-three cents. So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Number four, twenty-three dash three debt and interest, the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, eighty-eight cents. So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I don't have a line item for it, but I could make a motion to approve the opera grant for the town of Milton in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars, three cents, with stipulation line item will be added. So you should have lined it up. Fair enough.
On the opera award, I have a little discussion here. Aren't they usually listed right on both? We do them separately, and then they're on you.
Yeah.
Just, okay, we, we're gonna remember to put them on there, be consistent. Okay.
The motion was to approve it, but add.
Yes.
Add, add that to the warrant at some point, correct.
And I, and I seconded the motion.
Right, thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right, here you go.
Okay, number eleven, bid openings, we have none today. Contract awards, we have none. Number thirteen, certificate of appreciation Avon Selectmen Stephen Rose on his retirement from the Avon Board of Selectmen, director, Commissioner Stady.
All right. This, we had a note sent to us by a member of the advisory board and Chair Eric Beckerman, who does a great job serving Avon, and pointed out that that longtime member, Stephen Rose, is retiring after many, many, many years of service to the town of Avon as both a select board member and a planning board member. So it's with pleasure that we are able to present certificate, and with your pleasure, I can read it, on behalf of the board.
Sure, please.
So to, the certificate of achievement is proudly presented to Stephen P. Rose. The Norfolk County Commission Office is to say congratulations on your retirement after thirty years of volunteer public service in Avon as a planning board member and selectman. We extend to you our heartfelt thanks and appreciation for all your efforts. We wish you and your family the best of health and continued success in all your future endeavors. It is dated this day, the fourteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two. It has been signed by Joseph Shay, our chair, Peter Collins, Commissioner, and myself, which is Stady's Commissioner. Congratulations, Mr. Rose. Great achievement, great service. We missed.
Great job.
All in favor of this vote of appreciation to to Stephen Rose of the Avon Board of Selectmen? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Fourteen, report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Christian Shay. Very briefly, the, this evening, I'll be presenting an update to the advisory board on, obviously, our supplemental items that we've discussed previously, as well as other agenda items, including ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. So I just wanted to give the commissioners a brief note on what I plan to state, and it's very much at a thousand level, thousand-foot level. To date, the commissioners have awarded twenty-five million, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and seven, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. These awards have been distributed to seventeen of the twenty-eight cities and towns in Norfolk County. The portal that Norfolk County utilizes has received exactly one hundred applications as of today from twenty of the twenty-eight communities. Administratively, as you probably know, the county has withheld three percent of the grant with a breakout of two and a half for administration and point five percent for county projects. In this case, the, the ARPA program has been a tremendous resource for our cities and towns. We continue to assist them as needed. And Commissioner Stady, I want to let you know, I will not be here next week. I'll be on vacation, traveling out of state. But I do expect a strong likelihood that the town of Stoughton's very large and singularly largest award to date may be before you. I'm just currently sitting at stage two with Powers and Sullivan. So that's, this is the director, but we keep an eye on it.
Mentioned, Mr. McCrisky might be an attendance sign. We could.
Right, if, if it moves that way. Yeah, we're, we're waiting for the final level of approval before it gets to us.
I know that Mr. Chairman expressed interest in coming over to get it, so.
It's, it's moving quickly and it's before.
That's great.
Just wanted to give you that update. The, the other information, which I'll share with the advisory board tonight, is the spreadsheet that you know is up on our website that shows all the community's awards by, by, by type, by description. I want, I want to make the advisory board members comfortable that if they have any additional information, they're looking for where to go. But just this evening, I'll, I'll give them a brief update that we're doing quite well, and I believe outpacing the other counties with our awards broadly to most of them, all of our cities and towns.
So.
But any questions, comments?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we go right into a report of the county director.
A few, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items. Just an alert to all Norfolk County employees. Boston Mutual Life Insurance is scheduled to be at the Registry of Deeds from ten to four this Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They're available for any in-person discussion on your life insurance needs. Yesterday, we held a department head meeting. Our quarterly meeting was held here. We reviewed topics that included facility updates, policy issues, including the pending employee handbook, internal control plan, and other topics. We did ask during our multi-county ARPA meeting yesterday for interest by the county of Plymouth to host the next county managers' meeting. They are tentatively looking at October twenty-eighth, which I believe is a Friday. And if the county commissioners are okay with that date, we'll firm that up with them. It's gonna sound like a good date otherwise.
Soon.
It'll be in Plymouth. Location specifically, not sure. This afternoon, our newest hire was.
Are you gonna get something?
Yes, come on in.
Perfect timing.
Talk about you. Mary Ann Cassano joins us. Mary Ann started Monday as our new human resource specialist. We put it right to work, and this afternoon, she distributed the test kits, the COVID test kits, to our department personnel staff. And I wanted to bring Mary Ann, introduce her to the commissioners. I know you like to meet your new employees, and, and Michelle is out today. She would perform that role, but I'm gonna make her available to you. Through you, Commissioner Shay, this is Mary Ann Cassano.
Welcome, Mary Ann. I chatted with Mary Ann this morning. This is Lindsay, and she came Monday, and I'm encouraged that she's, she's here.
That's a good sign. Give her a couple of weeks. That's great. That's great. You have big shoes to fill, though. We should point that out. And actually, even though you have a different role, I had a friend of mine from Canton, I think he grew up in the Titus family, and one of his, I think his nephew works for Senator Feeny. And he went out of his way to point out how wonderful the staff here is, is at the county commissioner's office. He had to get his notary re-upped, and he said he could not believe how accommodating and friendly and welcoming they are. And it starts with right there, as you know, that's the first face they see. So I know you'll do a good job, but just a little pressure. And a bell check like to put pressure on. I'm in there more, you know, expectation. You know what I mean? So good luck to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Be great.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this completes our agenda. I have no other emergency items. We'll be finishing the day out at the advisory board meeting this evening.
Right.
In Quincy and go from there. Yeah, look, my items, commissions.
It's a quick question, follow-up to our visit to Stoughton, which went very well. The air vents have been installed. Thank goodness, that's done. And there were a couple of little odds and ends that they were looking at some remote configuration. Any more on that? You want to update maybe next week?
I'll look for an update. You're right. One of the items was there was an incomplete connection between the thermostats that talk to the rooftop units to control them.
Right.
As we heard from Chris Lee.
Yes.
The units aren't working because they're programmed from the roof.
That's the thing. Right.
The connectivity was incomplete. Mr. McGowan was going to speak with the prime contractor to determine when the electricians back up there to hook them up. I don't have an update on when that occurs.
Now, he was either electrician too, which is great. So is that something he would be able to do? It's, it's contractual application. Okay. All right. That was all I had. Till tonight. I'll make a motion to adjourn at two oh five.
Second. Motion made in second to adjourn all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.